City of Stevens Point Common Council Meeting, recorded April 15, 2024.
At seven o'clock, we will call the regular Common Council Meeting to order. Clerk, could I please get a roll?
Christiansen?
Here.
Shore?
Here for now.
Keemer?
Okay.
Broderick?
Here.
Burr?
Here.
Passant?
Here.
Niebon?
Here.
Shuda?
Here.
Lang?
Here.
Fishler?
Here.
Morrow?
Morrow is here.
Morrow.
All right, everyone is present. Join me in our salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much for joining us this evening. We got a full house and then some. As I mentioned, if you haven't signed in, please do so. There's a sign-in sheet in this room to my left. We just want a record of everybody who's here. And then if you wish to speak on an agenda item that's listed, you can certainly do that. The, it's been a busy week here in the city. We just completed the 54th Annual World's Largest Trivia Contest. Fifty-four hours of straight questions. I don't know if, is there anybody here who's not familiar with it? It is really a community event and has been so for, well, half a century. But we are privileged tonight to have one of the members of the winning team. Sean Chabelski is in the back. He's also a Parks Commissioner. He plays on dads' computers. Congratulations for your first-place finish. As a side note and also ran, Franklin Street Burnouts, my team, this is 47 years for me, we took eighth. So.
That's good.
It was still pretty good. Thank you. Lots of stuff going on. As I said, this year marks the 40th anniversary of Riverfront Rendezvous, and Director Kramer has taken the advantage of, excuse me, of that to enhance some of the things that we're doing for the 40th celebration. It was all started by Director Tom Schrader at the time, who is also here in the back. Where'd he go? He went, there he is. Tom Schrader is the one who started Riverfront Rendezvous. So let's give a round of applause to Tom. This year, not only are we going to have the best fireworks in the tri-state area, we're going to have some enhancements to the music, and this year, we're bringing back our carnival rides. So it's not going to be a full-blown carnival, but we're working on some carnival rides, and Director Kramer is responsible for that with his team. We also had been recognized by Todd, by the Arbor Day Foundation for Todd Ernstor and his team, our City Forester, for our 42nd year as Tree City USA. Forty-two years. Not only that, this is our 19th year of winning the Growth Award, which is like the super, super Tree City USA. So congratulations on that one, too. It's funny, I've been in local government apparently a little bit too long. One of my first things I did, I remember when we hit 25, and you and I talked about planting a silver maple in honor of a silver anniversary. So thank you very much, Todd, and your team for everything you do. We also, this past week, had a sign dedication. Most of you, I think, are aware of who Kent and Sue Hall are, longtime advocates for green space and conservation. And you probably know Sue recently passed away. Kent is still doing well, but as kind of a tribute, I said earlier today that they're both educators, and they've spent generations conserving green space in our community. And as a big thank you, the community is preserving green space in honor of them that will be there for generations. So we dedicated the sign to the Hall Nature Preserve, which is going to be out on the Far East Side, kind of by the Ice Hawks Arena and the soccer fields. We will have a formal dedication coming up. We're working with the family members to make that happen. Alder Niebon was there during the dedication and said some very wonderful words about Kent and Sue. But most of you probably know Sue was on our Parks Commission for more than 20 years. Kent has done countless things. I mean, I could start listing them off, but we only have a couple of hours. But most importantly, working with the Bluebirds and the Audubon Society. And we are going to be dedicating that 30-plus acres of nature preserve in the Hall's name. We also, after 24 years of service, Scott Halverson has left the Parks Department. He's taking a short-term, another position before his retirement. And Lance Musack, who worked in our engineering department for a couple of decades, recently retired. So we want to thank Lance and Scott for their service. On a sadder note, Orv Halverson passed away recently. The services were this past weekend. He served for 27 years on the Stevens Point Fire Department. And equally as important, he was the father of former Mayor, Mayor Andrew Halverson. So our condolences go out to the family, and we thank Orv for his service. On a slightly lighter note, this coming weekend, Pacelli High School is putting on a play called "A Murder Mystery at the Murder Mystery." So you can get tickets at the door if you're interested in going to see those students do that. That's great. And then coming up, May 9 through the 12th, the Central Wisconsin Area Community Theater is putting on a production of Postmortem at Century Theater, another kind of murder mystery. But local theater doesn't get enough attention, so I want to make sure that everybody's aware of these upcoming shows. And with that, I will shut my pie hole. Item number three is persons who wish to address the mayor and council on a specific agenda item other than a public hearing. They should register those requests at this time. Those who wish to address the Common Council during a public hearing are not required to identify themselves until a public hearing is declared open by me. We do not have any public hearings on the agenda. So again, excuse me, is there anyone who wanted to speak on an agenda item that has not registered for that agenda item? We are pretty liberal with that, but I just wanted to give people the opportunity. Okay, Bethany, you want to bring those up, please? Thank you very much. All right, first up, item number four, Gil Kavatic. Yeah, so when you come up, please go up to the lectern. You don't need to adjust the microphone. It's pretty good. State your name and address, and then you'll have three minutes.
Three minutes, sure. Hey, everyone, I'm Gil Kavatic, lifetime resident, first-time meeting attendee. I didn't really write or prepare much. I'm really working some extra hours right now. I just moved here. But I just wanted to call and make a little statement about the traffic on the west side. Neighbor Herb Weevil recently passed away, and it's been kind of a lifetime issue, I guess. I've been in my house on West River Drive for 25 years now, maybe 26. My wife will correct me, 25. I'm out there all the time. We see maybe one an hour when we're outside going 55 or 60 that I'm like, whoa. And I don't know what the solution is, but something has to kind of change. Center lines, signage, police presence. I'd say in all my years, we probably reported to the police maybe 20 times, like, hey, you guys got to do something. It's like the Audubon here, you know? We've seen several pretty big accidents right in front of our house while we were out in our yard. Quite a few dead deer in my yard that it's a 25. So I just wanted to come and state that I think it's really an issue on the west side in particular, that people come over the tracks and they hammer and head out of town they think they're in the country or something. So I personally made a couple of signs just to kind of create some awareness. I know there's some long-term things being discussed. I think that's all great. So, yeah, I don't know, maybe some increased police presence. Every time we've called and complained, they've sort of stepped up. There's been some officers sit. The kids take them a bottle of water. Every time I drive by, I say thank you because I'm sober and buckled up and not speeding. I just kind of want to create some awareness because we've lived there, and we walk and bike and hike and whatever. We've had so many close calls after years. My wife and I have said, God, I can't believe someone doesn't get killed over here. It's sad, but true. So even walking against traffic, when we walk, we try to wear high vis or flashlights. We've had people going 35, two, three feet away from us when there isn't cross traffic that I'm like, what are you doing? There's such a limited space to walk. Like, somebody was bound to get clipped at some point. So I don't know what else can be done to do that. You can't stop people from speeding or paying attention on their phones or whatever their issues are. But I drive all over town. I've lived in town my whole life. I delivered pizza for three years in high school, and it seems like the west side is kind of repeatedly out of control, in my opinion. So I'd like that to be somewhat focused on. Like I said, I know there's stuff in the works, and I just wanted to come and say my piece. Slow down on the west side, y'all.
Thank you very much. Lynette Kavatic? You guys signed up right next to each other. What am I supposed to do? Oh, is that what it was?
Lynette Kavatic, 216 West Pleasant Street. In light of the tragic hit-and-run that killed my neighbor, Herb Weevil, last month, I'm here along with many of my neighbors asking for some attention to be focused on increasing pedestrian safety on West River Drive and the surrounding neighborhood streets on the west side. The stretch of West River Drive between Turtle Pond and Highway H double H is where the road narrows the most, and there's barely any shoulder to walk on. Between rampant speeders and distracted drivers, it feels like running the gauntlet, just going for a walk some days. I've walked on West River Drive thousands of times, and there isn't one time where I haven't come home and complained about rude drivers not slowing down or even moving over. Quite frankly, I'm surprised there haven't been more pedestrians struck by vehicles on the west side. Furthermore, West River Drive and surrounding neighborhood streets have a speed limit of 25 miles per hour, yet it's completely disregarded, and traffic routinely travels at rates of at least 40 miles per hour or more. I've lived on the corner of West Pleasant and West River Drive for 25 years, and this is an ongoing issue which has been communicated to our current and previous older person, as well as other city officials. While an increased police presence in our neighborhood will certainly help, I'm asking for your help in implementing other short-term and long-term strategies to improve the pedestrian safety on the west side. Something has to change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Normally, we wouldn't do this after the public comments, but I just want to forewarn the police chief and the Director of Public Works that I'm going to ask you up here after this testimony to talk about some of the things that have been done. Chief, I know you, we talked about the number of citations, and then the number of things that could be done because I assure you that this has been a topic of discussion at our twice-a-week directors' meetings since the incident happened, trying to figure out what we can do. Next up, Jake Weevil.
Hello, I'm Jake Weevil. I am now at 1941 West River Drive. Herb Weevil was my uncle, and I'm here on his behalf. I grew up on West River Drive, and while I've spent most of my adult life elsewhere, every time I've come back to town, coming over the river on HH, driving up the road, I've felt lucky to have grown up in a place such as that, near the river. It's a community asset. We value our community spaces along the river in Stevens Point, and I think it's no different for the west side. I think I've seen a lot of compassion from neighbors that feel very similarly to my family, and I struggle to think that this could happen again and that I might have to watch somebody else in my community and watch their family go through the same thing that we're going through right now. And to me, that is unfathomable. I have a background in landscape architecture, and I've worked on pedestrian corridors throughout the Midwest, Asia, Oceana, and I think that this is a solvable issue. I think that there's things that can be done, and there are mitigation efforts that need to be considered. And I hope that this momentum continues. I don't want to see this fade to the background. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Shimke?
Hello, my name is Mike Shimke. I'm at 440 West Trillium Court, and I was just here to kind of echo the comments that have already been made from my neighbors. I don't really have anything additional to add, but it has been an ongoing problem. And I think additional problems that we've seen adding to the traffic is the Point of Discovery School has definitely added more traffic, particularly this last year as the high school was added into that neighborhood. So we've definitely seen that. And another problem we've seen is the trains block both West River Drive as well as HH. And as people try to get tired of waiting, there's definitely increased speed, and many of the speeding cars go right past the school. So something to be considered, not just West River Drive, but there is a lot of speeding that's being driven by other factors, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, there is a lot of beat-the-train syndrome. Jackie Shimke?
Good evening, my name is Jackie Shimke, and I live at 440 West Trillium Court in Stevens Point. And thank you for letting me address you this evening. I wanted to note that these are pins that we're all wearing in honor of Herb because he loved to walk along West River Drive and watch the birds, so we're trying to remember him tonight as we're here. Before I say anything, also, I want to express my deepest sympathies to the family of Herb Weevil. His death caused by a hit-and-run driver along West River Drive in early March is a true tragedy and one that very possibly could have been prevented. I've lived in Stevens Point for almost 12 years and have always considered myself and my family lucky to find such a quiet, peaceful neighborhood to live in on the west side of town. We've called our neighborhood a hidden gem. We have the Green Circle Trail running along our backyard, and in the past, we did not have much traffic or speeding going through our neighborhood. Unfortunately, I can no longer say this is the case. When we moved into our home, Jackson Elementary School was not in use. We were excited to hear the news that the Stevens Point Area School District was going to open the school as the Point of Discovery. As time has passed and with the addition of grades to the school, especially since the recent addition of the Charles F. Hernandez Alternative School for Learning, we have seen a dramatic increase in traffic and speeding in our neighborhood. Along with this, we have had the additional issue of traffic going through our neighborhood to try and beat the train. By this, I mean that when the train is stopped or moving slowly across the tracks close to the intersection of HH and Clark Street, cars will turn onto West Zinda Drive and then West Maple Ridge Drive in an attempt to cross the tracks on West River Drive before the train gets there and vice versa. If both crossings are blocked, this leads many people to drive along West River Drive to HH to get into town, oftentimes speeding well above the speed limit. This is a regular occurrence, sometimes multiple times a day. The speeding and reckless driving goes directly down West Zinda Drive in front of the Point of Discovery School. This is concerning and frightening, given the fact that there are children at the school along with other members of our community who cross West Zinda Drive to access the Green Circle Trail. Our neighborhood has come together and discussed these problems that we experience on a daily basis. We are tired of speeding and reckless driving on our streets, and it needs to stop before another life is lost or someone is seriously injured. We should not have to fear walking or biking in our own neighborhood. We are asking the community to work with us to come up with immediate, temporary solutions, such as the placement of speed humps or speed tables on the roads, while longer-term solutions can be identified, studied, and put into place. Our neighborhood looks forward to and is eager to work with the Common Council and city officials towards longer-term solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Golson?
Eric Golson, I live at 2025 West River Drive, and I'm here because Jackie Shimke asked me to be here. And she organized a bunch of people on the west side to get together and talk about these issues. And part of what we discussed was coming to the council meeting and just addressing our concerns to the city this way. It's been a rough couple of weeks for pedestrians in Stevens Point. February 21, right by campus, a pedestrian was hit by a driver on a crosswalk. That person had to be medevac to Wausau on the campus, where the speed was 25 miles an hour. The person was medevac to Wausau. On March 6, my neighbor and friend Herb Weevil was killed on the street in front of my house, an incident that could have been entirely predictable because I knew as far back as October 2021, and the city knew as far back as October 2021, that speed was an issue on that street. I requested and received a speed board study for that street in 2021. They found that the speeds were abnormally high. Enforcement was stepped up for a matter of maybe weeks or months, but gradually, the priorities change and the enforcement steps back. Nothing was done to address design issues on the street. And the street is designed in such a way to encourage people to pass. There is no center line marking, so people do pass people when you're going 25 miles an hour. They'll choose to go 40 miles an hour just to get ahead of you. So we know that speed has been an issue on that street. And then on March 28, on Division Street, there was a near incident where someone was speeding, apparently going 50 to 60 miles an hour just north of campus, swerved to miss a pedestrian, crossed two lanes of traffic, hit vehicles in the parking lot in front of D1 Brewing, went back on the street, and continued north. And as far as we know, that person has never been apprehended. The city has a speed problem, and what we're looking for is some leadership from the city to acknowledge this, to ask people to do better because there are behaviors that people are doing. So we could hear something from city leadership admonishing people to please adhere by these rules rather than jokes online about putting out spike strips for bicycles. I really would encourage you to take this seriously. I look forward to responses. I know in terms of Division Street, plans are already in way to fix things. I know on campus, on Fourth and Fremont, it's just a matter of striping maybe the pedestrian crossing. I'm not sure why that's not happening. And then on West River Drive, I feel like we're in the early stages, but I really hope we can get something done to address the safety concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Jess Sherman?
Hi, my name is Jess Sherman, 2048 West Zinda Drive. On the afternoon of March 5, I was heading home from Iran, going west over the HH Bridge when I saw flashing lights on West River Drive. As I got closer and saw just how many emergency vehicles were there, I knew someone had been hit. It was going to happen, not a matter of if, but when. As the gruesome details of what happened became clear, well, that's why I'm here. It could have been me. I saw Herb almost every day, sometimes multiple times a day, good weather or bad. He was a fixture in the neighborhood, always out walking, like many of us here. And like all of us here, I'm sure he knew just how dangerous the roads in the area had become. Since I've lived on the west side, the number of cars traveling through the neighborhood of West Zinda, West Maple Ridge, and West River Drives has increased. With a larger number of vehicles, the number of vehicles speeding at 10-plus miles per hour over the posted limit has also increased. Vehicles will pass you if you're going 25, often in what would be a no-passing zone if the roads were marked. They are rolling through or just blowing through the few stop signs that are present. They're not looking right when turning right, which is where a pedestrian would be coming from. They're cutting the corners, squeezing around you as you try to back into your driveway. People are nervous using the sidewalk because vehicles are spinning out and skidding in inclement weather because they are just going too fast. And where there is no sidewalk, vehicles are not yielding to or providing a buffer to bicycles and pedestrians on roads with narrow, no, or crumbling shoulders. There is not one solution to the problem, but we have long-term and short-term goals. Long-term goals include a pedestrian corridor well-marked and lighted for visibility running through the neighborhood. No passing zones and crosswalks should be marked, but these things won't bring safety if we don't slow traffic down. It is not only bikes and pedestrians at risk. It's someone's child running out into narrow West Maple Ridge after a toy or a pet when there is a vehicle barreling down the road at 40-plus miles per hour. That's what I'm worried about. Short-term, the number-one thing we want is to see temporary and possibly permanent speed bumps on West Zinda Drive, West Maple Ridge Drive, and West River Drive with continued monitoring to slow down and reduce traffic racing through the area. Only by targeting all three of these roads will we be able to increase safety to those who live and recreate in the area. A continued police presence and ticketing of vehicle speeding would also help with peace of mind. There has been an increased presence on West River Drive, but not on the other roads of West Zinda and West Maple Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sandy Madine?
Good evening. Sandy Madine, 2101 West River Drive. I want to thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak tonight. There are two words that I want you to remember after I step away from the podium. Speed and safety. Speed because speed kills, and safety because without it, residents become reckless and possible death occurs as well. Last month was a very sad month for the residents of West River Drive as we lost our neighbor and dear friend Herb Weevil. He died as a result of injuries from a hit-and-run accident while walking on West River Drive. Herb walked that road consistently and was very aware of traffic on West River Drive and the speed with which people drive it. We are here representing Herb and all the walkers, runners, joggers, bikers, track team members, Bach Run participants, mom and dads with their strollers and wagons who use West River Drive as an act for exercise, training, and accessibility to get from point A to point B. The countywide bicycle and pedestrian plan identifies West River Drive as a significant pedestrian recreation street. Everybody uses it, especially the thousands of people who participate in the Bach Run. And now, for the safety issue. The bicycle and pedestrian path also identifies West River Drive as one of only five north-south routes to get through the city. West River Drive is the only one of the five without a continuous paved urban walkway all the way from Main Street to County HH. The length of the missing paved urban walkway is located between the railroad tracks and Highway HH, and that's where our friend Herb was killed. The gap needs to be eliminated, especially in the area where the tiny shoulder drops off dramatically and where vehicles are approaching the curve because that's where accidents have been happening. In the future, pedestrians taking a walk should not have to worry about the roadway. Our neighborhood should be no less safe than the other four north-south roads. Now, here's the question. Can you help us improve the safety and speed conditions in our neighborhood so that this horrible situation does not repeat itself? Additionally, the residents of the neighborhood have met and formulated suggestions. We are more than willing to work with you. Please just ask. It's sad that someone had to die in this manner to bring this to the forefront. Studies have been done, statistics have been gathered, and now is the time to step up and do something about it. and do something about it. Note the two words I asked you to remember: speed and safety. Let's work on controlling the speed and improving the safety of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Did I miss anyone who wanted to speak on item number four, the non-agenda item?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
I'll yield if there's anybody else out there, though.
This is going to be a different topic than West River Drive. So, Dave, did you sign up?
I did.
Okay. I may have missed it, so that's okay. Go ahead. Come on up. I don't have it, Dave, I'm sorry, but that's okay.
Maybe I'm... Sorry. I'm Dave Madine. I've lived at... Just on the head of the part of the street that's a really tough area since 1992. I knew Friday. Does anybody know who Friday is? Friday Weevil, wonderful man, raised a wonderful family in that area on both sides of the street. Sandy spoke really eloquently, and she's the spokesman for our family. She can do this in a way that... She's articulate. She recognizes the importance for the kids, not only our grandkids, but the kids in the neighborhood. So she was first. West River Drive, again, is the only one of the five north-south streets. And just to go over them, there's Hollywood R., there's Hoover Road, there's Church Street, there's Water Street, and there's West River Drive. Those are the only ones that go from Main Street to County Road H. In other words, the arterials that go through town and then on the south side. The only ones. And we're the only one without a paved walkway adjacent to the roadway. That street has a lot of foot traffic. It may seem to be just a rural little street to a lot of people who are in the downtown area, but there's a lot of foot traffic in that area. And we get 2,000 people coming by there that we welcome once a year with the Bach Run, and all those kids are coming back because it was so inviting to be on that street. So it does have a lot of foot traffic. All we have is a tiny shoulder with a dramatic drop-off, so everyone walks on the edge of the roadway. And those who are more leisurely inclined actually have to walk into the roadway itself just because of the way the... If a person is leisurely walking, they need a little bit of room on both sides. They can't tiptoe along the pavement, so they're actually in the right-of-way when they're walking. I'm just telling you, that's the way it is. The City Public Works Department, the aldermen, and the mayor, thank you very much, gentlemen. You understand our problem, you're working with us, and I really appreciate you guys, the staff, from the little bit of contact for the short period of time that we've been able to work with them on it. Thank you very much. By the way, the charter school principal, the alternative school principal have been at the outside entrance to the... This whole week, off and on through this whole week, because the kids leave at different times because the school is different, it's a charter school and alternative schools. They don't come and go at the same time. They've been out there to admonish the kids, and then the teachers have also acknowledged that or admonished the kids within their classrooms out there. So I think we're all trying to work together in the west side. So I appreciate all of you folks and just everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I see the city attorney standing there, but before we do, I mentioned that I wanted to have the chief and the public works director come up and provide their three minutes of a non-agenda item to tell the council what they have done and what could be done. Are you still going to shake your head? It's an important issue, and I just want... I don't want people to think we're sitting on our laurels.
So you pointing out the importance of this, I think underscores the importance of why this really ought to be an actual agenda item so that anyone in the community who has an interest in this, and obviously, a lot of people here tonight with some very salient comments, appreciate the passion on this issue. It's of the utmost importance, but anyone who's worked with me for a long time on this stuff knows that I'm sort of barely tolerant of the non-agenda item from a public meetings compliance perspective. And once we start going into having staff members come up to the podium and saying things to the council, I think it treads even further away from what is in compliance with that. So I'm making myself the least popular person in the building right now, I know, but I think probably the best thing here would be to take these comments we've heard tonight as a springboard into having an actual agenda item on this where we can come fully prepared as staff to discuss it, and that way we can have as long and in-depth a conversation as this deserves.
I will do that. We will... First of all, let me assure you that we've been working on this. The police chief, the public works director can provide you information, but what we'll do is we'll put it on as a discussion item with some possible action if we have something ready for action at next month's public works meeting. And that way we can have an open discussion and we can legally provide you some of the information that staff is working on, as well as talk about some of the ideas that the neighbors had. And if that's okay with everyone, that's how we will address this next month. Public Works is going to be the second Monday of the month. I don't know what day that is, but it's 6 o'clock right here in this same room, and we'll make sure that both the public works director and the police chief, as well as anybody else who has comments in regards to this, will have their information ready to let people know what we have been doing, what we can do, some of the things that we may not be able to do, and we can have an open discussion on that. Will that work?
Sounds perfect.
All right. Thank you very much. And then alderperson Nibone, you had a comment on something?
Yeah. That date would be May 13th.
Thank you very much.
For the board of public works. Yeah, I wanted to make my council colleagues aware of an after-action review report that was prepared by our deputy fire marshal, Justin Mallon, who also is our emergency management coordinator. It's contained in the minutes of the police and fire commission meeting. It's also available on the city website for anybody in the public that would like to read this. It's an extremely well-done report that highlights all the things that went into responses on that ice storm we had and found a lot of areas that need improvement and some areas where they were doing really well. So I think for anybody that's interested, it makes very good reading. It's a very well-done report, and kudos to Fire Marshal Mallon and the fire department for putting this all together and making sure we've got something going forward for emergency management that we hadn't had in the past. So this is going to help us, help them, and police, fire, all those folks, take care of us better in the community. So I encourage everybody to read it if you get a chance.
Excellent. Thank you very much, alderperson. We appreciate that. Before we move on to the consent agenda item, we have some legal housekeeping to do. And item number five is the consent agenda. I'm pulling item number C3, and we'll have items later in the agenda, too, for action first. That is the request from an alderperson to extend Walker Street through Parkland and Old Wassa Road, or to Old Wassa Road. Many of you were at the parks commission meeting, heard the citizens very adamantly talking about preserving that parkland. And although we've done this process for more than 20 years, we have been recently made aware of state statute 62.23/5, which requires a bunch of things need to go through the plan commission first. And I'll read that. The location, an architectural design of any public building, the location of any statue or other memorial, the location, acceptance, extension, alteration, vacation, abandonment, change of view, sale, acquisition of land for or lease of land of any street, alley, or other public way, park, playground, airport, area for parking vehicles, or other memorial or public grounds, the location, extension, abandonment, or authorization for any public utility, whether publicly or privately owned, et cetera, et cetera. There is a clause in there, and maybe Logan, you can come in and talk about this one that says, "It's required to go to the city plan commission," even though we haven't been doing that. We need to do that, but there's a clause in there that says, "Unless such report is made within 30 days or longer, as may stipulated by common council, the council or any other public body or officer may take final action without it." I assume that means it has to be at least discussed at the plan commission. If the plan commission doesn't act, then the appropriate body can take action. Is that the correct interpretation or not?
So we're on agenda item number five?
Yeah, the C3, that one, and then we'll have that one later that we talked about as well.
Okay. So in terms of just the dynamics of how that statute actually plays out procedurally, the way that I've always thought... So it starts off saying, "The common council shall refer to the plan commission X, Y, and Z." Now, obviously, we don't have... The most cumbersome way you could possibly interpret that would be to say, "We put this onto an agenda for the council so that somebody can move to refer it to the plan commission so that the next month it goes to the plan commission that comes back." Well, that would be just goofy. So instead, we have sort of these standing procedures, and we have content in our ordinances that those items just go to the plan commission first. The plan commission makes a recommendation, they take action. Now, that 30-day aspect that you mentioned, the way that that could play a role, and we've seen a few times over the years where this actually kind of comes up, is that you could have the plan commission take up something, and then they move to postpone action on it. Well, they can't do that indefinitely. That clause is in there in order to prevent things from being basically pigeonholed at the plan commission level. Now, the way that our schedule works, it would be very odd for that 30-day period to elapse prior to there being a subsequent plan commission meeting and then followed by council. So unless there was an action to postpone for two months, it's unlikely that that 30-day period would elapse. But if it did, the council can move forward with action without having received a recommendation.
Great. Thank you for the clarification. That's kind of what I thought it was. So again, even though we've been doing this for multiple decades, everything going forward that's required to go to the plan commission will now go forward to the plan commission first before it comes up for consideration at any other committee as required by state statute. In this case, and in the later agenda items, we already have a design. We already have a bid. That bid is actually subject to approval tonight for some of those. We're hoping that it won't delay the project, and we have relatively certain that in the Walker Street case, it won't delay the project, but with the other one coming up, I think it may have some significant impacts. So with the least delay and the least impactful to the process and going forward, of course, changing it, I think a recommendation would be to have a motion to approve the hammerhead design subject to the plan commission review. That delays the project about two weeks for plan commission. So I think that's probably the most appropriate action. Coming up on item number 14 as well, we're going to have the same sort of thing in item number 10 with both of those bids. So I think that's appropriate.
Just to clarify, you know, obviously, a lot of these conversations kind of happened here a little bit last minute today. I did speak to Director Badun late this afternoon, and, you know, if you look at the total sum of work to be done on the Walker Street reconstruct, the hammerhead construction itself is a tiny, tiny fraction of it, and physically, it's one of the simplest and it's probably one of the very last things that'll happen. So the thought was that being able to act on this tonight and start to move forward with the project is more a matter of just the practical and sort of comfort-level aspects of the relationship between the preferred bidder on the contract and the public works department. Can we go ahead and start all the basics on this without this last little design detail having gone through the approval process? And I think probably the answer to that is yes. Scott was pretty confident that the answer to that would be yes. So I think, like what you said, we can have the plan commission take a look at that hammerhead, and then we can move forward from there.
And then the other two items on the agenda, though, could be impacted. The one in particular is with the utilities. So is it... Is there something wrong with having the council approve this subject to the plan commission review?
I don't think there's necessarily anything wrong with that on its face. The question I'd have, if we had more time to really examine this thoroughly, it would be, well, what aspects of that project have gone to the plan commission? And is there anything within the actions the plan commission has already taken that does address the location of utilities? Now, when we're talking about what needs to go before the plan commission, it doesn't have to be, you know, here's the exact, you know, dimensionality, you know, diameter, materials, you know, angles. It doesn't have to be like engineering blueprints. It needs to be like, here, it's going to be within this right-of-way, it's going to be water, it's going to be gas, well, not gas, we don't have a gas utility, water and sewer and wastewater and all that. So we'd have to look back and see what the plan commission had actually looked at already.
The plan commission sent that plat review back.
Right.
So nothing was approved by plan commission?
I'm speaking kind of more in general. If we were going to look at, you know, which projects... You know, you said there's that one tonight. If we're going to examine any other projects that we think that this particular wrinkle might affect, that would be the question I'd have is, you know, within the less detailed earlier actions that the plan commission took, was there anything in there to indicate that there would be public utilities laid along certain roads or anything like that? Because again, we're just talking about the location. We're not talking about the specifics. We're not talking, obviously, about the contract aspects of it. But I think, you know, certainly for tonight, the council can take an action that is contingent like that. I think there's no harm in doing that. We can have more time to evaluate exactly what the impact of a decision like that is, but there's not like a problem that would be created by taking an action like that tonight.
Thank you. Yeah, and going forward, we're going to make sure this doesn't happen again. So as I said, the recommendation would be with this one, item number 10, probably 11. I don't think there's anything that the plan commission has to review in item number 11. And then item number 14, I would be comfortable with the recommendation for council to approve, in this case, the hammerhead design subject to plan commission review.
So a motion would be in order?
Yes.
I will then motion for that.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I have a second.
Seconded by Placence. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm glad you actually came up with the same solution that I had come up with. I had discussions with them as well, and I think that's a good common sense, short-term solution, and I appreciate your willingness to take a look at doing things differently in the future. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, and this is only... It only came up because this was very recently brought to our attention. There was another one when I first took office about the public works board having to select their chair the first Monday of the month. Well, we normally did it all tomorrow. So when we find out we're making a mistake, we own it, and we're going to fix it going forward. So from now on, everything that might need to be reviewed by plan commission, we'll get the proper plan commission review. Any other discussion? Yes? I don't know. Why my throat's so dry?
I think... Well, I can only speak for myself, but I suspect most of my colleagues would agree with the neighborhood. I would like to see the least disruptive to that unique habitat as possible. If there's a better design that's less disruptive, I'd rather find it now than when it's too late. If there's not, I'm in favor of going with the hammerhead. It accommodates the fire department. If it creates the least disruption of that unique habitat, I think that's the way I would go. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. Any other orders? Alder Shore?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I think that sort of sentiment is probably echoing what the discussion from Parks Commission, where there really was broad agreement of not wanting to disrupt the park and not wanting to take out trees. I think that it's really... It's more of a process issue and sort of how to view a change to the street and how I think the council would be able to better deal with those kinds of design questions broken out rather than within a capital plan or putting something out for bid. So... But this sounds, especially kind of practically breaking it out and making it chronologically at the end of the construction, sounds like it helps with this as well.
And I apologize, alderperson Shore. I completely forgot to acknowledge your trivia team, which also did pretty well, so congratulations.
It's in between 20...
I'm sure there's other ones out there.
In between 25 and 30 somewhere.
300 teams out there, so I'm sure I missed some other ones. Any other comments? Okay, the motion before you is to approve the hammerhead design on the North Side Reconstruction Project subject to plan commission approval. We did have a few people that wanted to speak on that, so I want to make sure everybody understands what the motion in the second is. The motion is to approve the hammerhead design subject to plan commission review. The plan commission will be the first Monday in May, and that is? The first Monday in May.
13 minus 7, 6th?
6th. May 6th. And that's also right here in this room, 6 o'clock. So I did have a list of people that wanted to speak. Is there anyone that still wants to speak? I'm giving it a little extra time because there may be people in the overflow room. Absolutely. Go ahead, Josh.
Thank you. Thanks to the alder... Thanks to the council members that spoke with me previously and answered my questions. I was able to attend the meeting tonight, so I'm glad to be here. And thanks to everybody that spoke about the traffic on the west side for basically saying everything I could about why we don't want a bunch of traffic coming down that part of Walker Street because it's the edge of town and people are going to be hitting Old Wassa Road as fast as they can, and there'd be a lot of disruption to the neighborhood. So I like living there. I bought the house in that area because it's quiet, because there's not a lot of traffic. I went to kindergarten at Madison School. I lived on Buchold Street from like '86 to '88, so been around the neighborhood a bit. I have noticed, this is kind of a tangent, I have noticed stepped-up speed controls and things going on around town. Support that. Keep it up. But yeah, as far as Walker Street, I mean, we've got light pollution, there's wildlife, there's plants, there's a floodplain right there, there's just... There's a lot going on that would be severely disrupted if we ran a road through there, and I don't really see a need for the traffic. Everybody can get out to Old Wassa if they have to. So I'm great with the hammerhead. So I'm, I'm great with the hammerhead. Make sure the fire trucks can access it, ambulances. I'm looking forward to storm drains. Man, my electric bill is expensive with all the sump pumps. So anyways, looking forward to the progress on the neighborhood, but let's, let's try to keep it a cul-de-sac if we can. So thanks for everybody that supports that.
Thank you very much. Again, the motion is to approve the hammerhead design subject to Plan Commission review. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I'd like a roll call, please. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you are opposed, you will vote no.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Placence.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Thank you all very much. The rest of the consent agenda, item number five, is now up for review.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Alder Keemer motions. Do we have a second? Seconded by Niebone. Discussion? Comments from the audience?
We lost interest.
That's okay. Hearing and seeing none. Clerk, would you please call that roll?
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Placence.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number six is a resolution request from Wayne Bushman representing Sunrise Point Ventures LLC for a conditional use permit to construct a self-service storage buildings on the property located at 5001 Jerns Drive with the parcel identified in your packet consistent with chapter 23.01 sub-14 sub-F.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Alder Person Morrow, seconded by Shuda. Discussion? Yes, sir?
Sure. I've known Wayne for over 40 years, and he has been a businessman in this neighborhood for 50 years in Stevens Point, hiring people, local money, staying local the whole time. He made a donation of the land for the Midstate Technical College out there. Wayne does things the right way, and this, in looking at that, when it went through the Plan Commission, it's set up to be just what should be in that neighborhood. So that's all I've really got to add to it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. We did have the, I'm going to call you out, we had two Alder elects just walk in, so thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming tonight. We appreciate it. Any other comments? I'm giving it a little extra time because there may still be people in the overflow room. They can hear, but they can't talk to us, which would be great if we could, my wife says if she could do that for me, she can hear me, but she doesn't have to talk to me. All right, if you're in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. And the clerk will call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Placence.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number seven is a resolution request from the City of Stevens Point to dedicate an unaddressed parcel bounded by Maria Drive for right-of-way purposes. This did go through Plan Commission and was recommended for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Christensen to approve?
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, was that?
I'll take it.
I just heard the voice, I couldn't tell who it was. So seconded by Burr. Discussion there. Comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Placence.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Placence.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number eight is a resolution request from the City of Stevens Point to dedicate an unaddressed parcel bounded by Maria Drive for right-of-way purposes. This did go through Plan Commission and was recommended for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Christensen to approve?
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, was that?
I'll take it.
I just heard the voice, I couldn't tell who it was. So seconded by Burr. Discussion there. Comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Placence.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number eight is a resolution request from Michael Moore representing R.A. Cook and J.I. Altenberg Cooperative to designate the property located at 2041 Madison Street as a local historic site consistent with chapter 22.06 sub-1.
Moved to approve.
Motion to approve by Burr, seconded by Lang. Discussion? Comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Placence.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number nine is an ordinance amendment, a request from the City of Stevens Point to amend chapter 22, the Historic Preservation and Design Review Ordinance of the Revised Maintenance Code of the City of Stevens Point. Said amendment amends section 22.05 sub-7 as it relates to demolition by neglect. For those of you who don't know, occasionally, buildings have to be torn down, but if we have to tear them down because you didn't do your due diligence in upkeeping that building, you are going to be responsible for the cost of that demolition now. We don't want to tear down historic buildings, but many times, they are not, they're not owned by the city, so other than our Property Maintenance Code, we don't have a whole lot of authority over that. This says if you caused that building to become in such disrepair that you, we have to tear it down, you're responsible for it. You don't get to walk away. Alder Persons, what are your wishes? Director, you want to speak on this?
Just for some clarification, the demo by neglect essentially allows the city to go in and make repairs on behalf of the property, and then this allows us to levy that, those repairs onto that property owner. We already have what are essentially police powers where we can issue razor repair orders, and if, let's say, razor repair order is not satisfied, we can go in and raise the property. In this case, this allows us a number of steps to repair the property before it gets to that point. Demo by neglect is something like you have a historic property, let's just say the castle, for example, in which you have a front porch that's starting to lean because of a post that's in poor shape. This allows the city to go in via the demo by neglect ordinance, fix that problem in an effort to retain the historic nature of that specific property.
And then bill the owner.
And then bill the owner, correct.
And that means putting it on the levy, so it's on your property taxes. That's an encumbrance on the property that will be paid.
Correct.
All right, did we get a motion?
No.
We didn't.
I'll move approval of the ordinance amendment.
By Keemer, seconded by Lang. I saw the hands, so I figured. Discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Placence.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 10 is Project 24-01, to award the North Side Streets Improvement Project to A1 Excavating out of Bloomer in an amount not to exceed $3,329,944.60. This one's a little trickier because I don't believe that we have anything in this project that requires Plan Commission review. The director and I talked about it, so I would recommend, just to be safe, that we authorize or approve the bid subject to Plan Commission review if necessary. So if tomorrow, the city attorney determines that, yes, this piece needs to go to Plan Commission, we can get it to Plan Commission and not have to come back to council for that. I don't think there's anything in this one.
I assume that that judgment is based on it being a reconstruction without a change being made.
But there are changes. We would mostly call them minor changes, but this, this whole statute thing came up relatively recently, so we haven't had time to fully vet this. It's not going to happen again going forward. This is the only odd month, but just to be safe, because if it turns out that you approve it, and then we find out that, oh, this one corner piece or whatever needs to go to Plan Commission because it's a, whatever, significant enough change or falls under that statute, then we'd have to bring it back to council. So this would allow us to move forward whether or not it's determined that it needs to go to Plan Commission. So again, the motion would be, I would recommend the motion be to approve the bid subject to Plan Commission review if needed.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve.
Moved by Christensen, seconded by Shore.
With those conditions.
Discussion? And again, this is just a weird month because we came upon this very last minute. It's not going to happen again going forward. Any comments? Hearing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Placence.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Placence.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 13 is Project 24-08, to award the 2024 Fire Station 2 Roofing Project to Modern Builders out of Janesville, Iowa in an amount not to exceed $354,748.38.
Moved by Fishler.
Seconded by Niebone. Discussion? Comments from the audience? Hearing and seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Placence.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 14 is Project 24-11, to award the 2024 Forest Creek Subdivision Project to A1 Excavating LLC out of Bloomer, Wisconsin in an amount not to exceed $3,256,634.40. This is another one of those where the Plan Commission reviewed the preliminary plat, they sent it back. We are under the understanding that we're going to have to run utilities there regardless, so we're going to phase this in. The first phase would be to run the utilities up Joe Street to Gala, and then later, after the plat was reviewed, we would do all of the rest of it as Phase 2. However, it's my understanding, and at least some of city staff, that because we didn't get Plan Commission authorization to extend those utilities up Joe Street, I would ask that the motion also be to approve the bid based on Plan Commission review. However, before we do that, we do have one person wishing to speak, and that is Cheryl?
I'm Cheryl Pavlik-Marty. Many of you know me as Sheri. I'm at 326 Berlowski Road North, and I appreciate the opportunity to give you some perspective and some comments from one of your taxpayers. Just want to understand the reason for the acquisition and annexation. I've seen the words affordable housing, I've seen increased housing stock. They seem to be two different planning needs as to the total cost. To a future home buyer will likely be outside what individuals are seeking for affordable housing. Perhaps those zero lot lines maybe meet their needs. But my only observation is that these terms are being used interchangeably, which does not seem to be accurate. I did read a letter from Trevor Rourke that I thought he did provide very good observations that should be addressed by the council. However, as a taxpayer in the City of Stevens Point, I'd like to request that there's more transparency of the pro forma of the entire project and that's made available. I assume that Cory, along with Mr. Knauski, have completed this pro forma on the project prior to your acquisition. If this has been available, I, to my oversight, have not seen that, so I apologize, but I think it's important that we see the entire pro forma, if that's available to us. The further comments I have are related to the assumptions that you did utilize if the pro forma was completed. I'm going to share my questions. I'm not looking for a response, but I, right now, but I would like a response from the city on these questions. First of all, what was the acquisition cost? Does a proposed request for the 3.2 et cetera million include roads and other infrastructure plus the costs around the power, sewer, and water? Does the city have anything in the planned budget to cover the initial shortfall? If I understand the requests thus far, Mr. Knauski is expecting a revenue shortfall of 1.14 million. Will any of these costs becomes the burden of our, of those of us as current taxpayers of the city, or do you have a plan of how you're going to address that shortfall? Have the proposed restricted covenants been developed yet to ensure that the size of the homes to be built will be feasible on the sized lots? We just, on our way here, we, my husband and I stopped at a nearby subdivision to We just, uh, on our way here, we, my husband and I stopped at a nearby subdivision to that property and looked at the zero lot lines. And just want to make sure that people are parking on that road so the roadways that you're designing, um, it's, becomes a one-lane road when you're trying to go through those zero lot lines because of how people are parking. Has the planning included ongoing maintenance such as roads and waste collection? Is that going to be done by the city? Or are you going to outsource that to the town hall as you do in our subdivision that's right on the, on Berlowski Road? What are the plans to sell the lots? Will there be real estate fees to sell? Or is the city planning to have an employee handle those direct sales to the landowners? So basically, I'm asking, have we looked through this as a city taking on this development of a residential project? Look, I applaud the new, um, area that you're developing, the 700 acres. I think the city has lots of experience with that. I'm not sure about how much experience they have as being a developer of a residential, uh, s- subdivision. So I'm asking you to fully understand the return and have us as taxpayers fully understand the return on investment for this project and ensure that we are not going to assume additional, have an additional burden or additional costs because of this decision that you're making. So I would ask you to just please consider these questions and make sure you fully understand that impact before voting to move forward on the project. Thank you.
Thank you much, very much, Sheri. Um, and I know it's not, um, on the agenda technically, but it is related. So unless the city attorney pops his head in, um, to tell me to stop, sir, we.
I did ask to be included. I don't know why I don't.
Where was your sign-up sheet?
Yeah, I told the young lady that when I signed the.
Oh, so you didn't, you didn't fill out a sign-up sheet?
I didn't.
Gotcha. Okay. So go ahead, and while you're doing that, step up to the microphone. Um, I will try and answer some of Sheri's questions. First of all, we're not talking about the plat tonight. Um, those, most of those questions and comments are more related for the Plan Commission, uh, which I believe is going to be next month, Ryan, is that correct? Next month, first Monday of the month, that's the sixth. I'm aware of that now. Um, all of our records are, are open and public. So if you have a question on any of those, you can just contact the office. They can email them to you. They can print them and, and have them ready for you for pickup. I don't remember the dollar amount. Director Knauski may remember that. Uh, the most recent subdivision we did was Whitetail. So yes, the city has pretty good experience in, in creating subdivisions. What we're talking about right now is the utility extension of Joe Street. Something is going to go there. What that plat looks like has not been approved by the Plan Commission yet. Um, and the additional taxes is not going to be put on, uh, anybody else. It's designed to be, uh, separated deferred. What, what do we call this? Deferred, uh, deferred assessment. That's the word I'm looking for. So the people that utilize and benefit from those utility extensions are going to be the ones paying for it. Of course, anything within the city is going to have, uh, city street plows and, and, uh, garbage pickup. So that's all factored in, uh, when we do the books, and Ryan can make those available.
Which department are you referring to?
Community Development.
Say, Ryan's office?
Community, yes, Community Development. I mean, honestly, if you email the clerk, the clerk will get the information from them. Um, like, everything we do is, is open. I mean, I'm assuming you'd know this with the, the relations we had, so. All right. Yes, sir, go ahead.
601 North Maple Bluff Court.
I'm sorry, one more time for the name?
Ernie Neufeld.
Thank you.
My, because we don't have an approved plot, I would encourage you to vote no, just because I don't see how you can have a, a price without a plot map. Because Section 2 or Phase 2 of this is through the new subdivision, which we've heard numbers as far as 35 homes, 73 homes, and 59 homes. Until you know how many homes, you don't know how many linear feet of pipe you're going to run. The roads haven't even been established yet. You don't know how many square feet of blacktop. I urge you to vote no until you have a firm grip on what the subdivision is going to look like. I don't think you can, in good conscience, vote on something you don't have a price tag for. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and to address your concerns, sir, we know that the utilities have to go up there. That's Phase 1. As I said at the Plan Commission meeting, something will go there. We're in the process of reducing the number of, uh, plats that are available, the number of units available. But I don't think there's going to be significant changes to the road design. The utilities are going to go through the entire property, so the linear feet is really not going to change as well. Um, and then should the, once the plat design is reviewed and approved by the Plan Commission and the common council, uh, any change orders that are necessary can be incorporated in this. But we know we're running them at least to Gala Road, um, and that's the Phase 1. Director, did you have anything you wanted to add? I saw you standing there, and I felt really bad, so we wanted to get you up here in front and center.
Sure. Just to address a few comments I've heard a number of times, whether it be tonight or at previous meetings. Um, you have the idea that, I don't know where the idea of affordable housing came as part of this overall discussion. To construct a home, uh, right now within the city, we're seeing a cost of per square foot between 250 and $300. Average is about $285 a square foot. So realistically, the, the folks that are going to be building, buying and building homes in this, uh, subdivision are not the ones that are going to be looking for more entry-level housing. You might see some folks downsizing, uh, from larger homes to the zero lot lines. Uh, that's becoming more and more common, especially as, uh, those who are of the boomer generation, uh, begin to downsize and become empty nesters. So really, um, that's probably the first thing. I don't know where the affordable housing thing. Oftentimes, it is thrown out there as the boogeyman, uh, to, to scare neighbors, uh, but realistically, I don't expect that this to be an affordable housing development by any means. Uh, what we are trying to achieve with this, though, is we know we have a housing crisis in the city of Stevens Point. Uh, this may encourage somebody who's in a smaller, less expensive home to hermit crab into a larger home because they have a growing family, or they, maybe they have a shrinking family, so they want to downsize from a family home. There's this idea in, in housing that you have to have different housing to move people around. It's the basics of, uh, housing economics, right? So, uh, we, we see that as being the opportunity to help create more affordable housing that already exists within the city's existing municipal boundary. Uh, that's probably the first thing. Second thing is, the mayor mentioned this, you know, the density of the subdivision itself will change, and that has been the clear direction from the City Plan Commission when they sent the plat back to city staff. But the physical road layouts, um, the, uh, linear feet of pipe, things of that nature, will not change. You know, we're, we're getting to the point, uh, as we look at pro formas, uh, and as the mayor mentioned, we have done subdivision development before. It's been probably 20 years, but we have experience doing this in the city of Stevens Point. The linear feet of roadway, of pipe, the square footage of asphalt will not change. Now, what does change is the number of lots at that same, uh, infrastructure will service. The less lots that you have, the higher those lots have to be because you have to cover that upfront cost. Um, there is about a $1.2 million shortfall, but that $1.2 million shortfall does not take into account future phasing of, uh, the area south of Gala Road between Regent and Gala. Is expected that, as, uh, we'll call Phase 1, that area north of Gala Road becomes developed. Uh, when we hit a certain threshold, we'll put the subdivision in on the south side of that. Now, I understand that's a little, uh, you know, cart before horse, if you will. But in this instance, we have an agreement with the property owner, uh, who we bought the property from on the south side, that we wouldn't develop that specific area until we acquired the remaining five acres from them, and that will occur in the next few years. Uh, that was an agreement that the, uh, staff and council agreed to, uh, when we acquired the, the lot just south. So because of some of the, I guess, less publicly known aspects of, uh, how this development has kind of been pieced together over the last two years, um, I understand why the public would be, uh, a little confused as to why we're, we're leapfrogging, if you will, a developable property, uh, because of that. Now, remember, that 1.2 million that we have a shortfall for will be made up for as that area between Gala Road and Regent Street is developed in the next several years. So, um, staff is confident that, uh, the pro forma, uh, that we've presented to this, uh, not this body, but, uh, to finance and that what we've seen internally does work, uh, at the 59 lots. Um, anything less than that, I become a little bit more skeptical whether or not it would financially work for itself. So, um, more than happy to answer any questions you folks might have, but just to provide some clarifying questions.
Thank you very much. Alder Person, Morrow.
Um, based, uh, based on the lots there, uh, what would the price of a home be on those lots for a brand-new construction?
We've, uh.
That's a big crystal ball question.
Yeah. We, we can, we can reasonably expect the assessed value of those homes to be between 300 and 375,000, depending on where they're at, how big the lot is, how big the home is. But on average, you'll see, uh, homes assessed above the, the 300s.
Okay.
Any other questions for the director?
We have questions coming up and after his emotion on this.
We can, yeah. Um, so again, our speaker list is exhausted here, so, uh, again, I would recommend that the motion be to approve the bid subject to Plan Commission review, if that was your wish. Alder Person, Niebohn.
I will make that motion.
Thank you.
Subject to Plan Commission review.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Morrow. Discussion. Alder Plissant.
Go for it. So we're looking at 59 lots right now, and you're looking at, you've mentioned, uh, 1.14 million shortfall in the end. Um, needing $3.2 million right now to get this project going. Where's that money coming from?
I don't know if Comptroller Laddick's in the audience or not.
Comptroller, okay, I'm going to give it a minute for the comptroller to come in from the overflow room. Honestly, there's chairs here, so Joel, if you just want to have everybody move down here, you can close off the overflow room. I think we're, we're done with it for tonight. Okay? I've got at least 10 chairs.
So for the source of the funding, we would have to borrow the money, and then, uh, we'd be looking to repay that borrowing through the sale of the lots.
Okay, now that is a shortfall right there of 1.1 million. The lots did sell, or the, the city purchases for 475,000. Is that factored into this?
Yeah, it's taken into consideration, correct. Come up to them.
Into this $3.2 million figure?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. The, the number is, the, the 28,000 per lot is just based on the infrastructure. The 450,000 is built, will be built into the sale of the lot. So that 450,000 that we bought the parcel for, uh, about a year and a few months ago will be part of the overall sale of those lots. What you see and, and what was provided to the City Finance Committee, uh, was essentially the per lot cost, uh, for just the infrastructure. Doesn't mean that we're going to sell those for those. In fact, most of those sale prices are a little low. I mean, you can't find a lot for 28,000 anywhere. Uh, and so that's where you'll see that, uh, 450,000 come in and be paid for as those lots sell.
So that amount is going to be paid for by the lot, but then the gross income from the sale of those lots is going to be less than by 475,000 to cover the 2.1 million that you said that was going to be taken in?
I'm not sure I follow your question.
2.1 million was from, uh, your statement from last week. And now we've got 475,000, which was the purchase of the lot. Where, where did that money come from? And if you're going to take from the sale of the lots to pay the 475,000 off, then you're going to have less money available from the sale of the lots for the infrastructure.
If I could, I think I understand where this is going. I see a confused look there, but, uh, so the money that purchased the property initially?
Yes.
Was authorized by council?
Yes, it was, yeah.
The, the cost of the lots will be the cost of the purchase price divided by the number of lots that eventually come out of this, plus the cost of utilities divided by the number of lots that come out of this eventually. So each lot is going to be the cost of the actual land plus the cost of the utilities for that share, whether that's divided by 60 or 70 or 450. Sorry, don't want to scare anybody. Uh, but you know, does that make sense? I think that's what you're asking, right? The net is going to be zero. That's the goal. We don't want to take a loss on this, but we're also not in it to make a profit. So the, the cost of the lot will be actual costs of the land plus the utilities and whatever infrastructure costs there are.
The way I look at it as a taxpayer, with adding the cost of the lot and the cost of the utilities be done, the shortfall would be 1.6 million that would be out there. We're paying, we're getting the money, and we're borrowing it. There's nothing figured in here as far as how much interest is going to be paid on that money, too. Is this really what the taxpayers want us to do is to approve this because we passed, the council passed, the approval of the land purchase? Now, a year from now, when it comes down, and this is all said and done, it's not going to be who pushed this through, it's going to be the council passed it. Are you guys comfortable with the fact of what they're looking at doing here? And how do you feel that the people who voted you into this office would feel with having this amount of an increase? Because this land could be out there for 10 years before it sells, some of it. That's hanging out there for a long period of time with these costs.
Yeah, Whitetail was out there for quite a while, too.
Yes, it was. Yeah. And you're looking here as far as smaller lots, not as desirable, but based on price differences of when Whitetail sold and now, Whitetail was a higher one. But if you look, there's lots in a lot of other places around here that aren't going to be quite as packed in, and they're going to be involved with Realtors. And there is less people with interest rates rising that can afford it and construction costs going up. You could be sitting on this 15 years, some of this land or longer, and it's going to be paid for by the taxpayers, not by the people who were in this originally that are buying these lands.
Valid points. Cory, do you want to talk about the cost of borrowing and, uh, how you figure that in when, when we do a, a lot sale, the, the overall cost of the project and then the average cost of the lots?
Sure. I, I mean, it's, it's a fair point that, you know, we would have to, you know, include that in the pro forma to, you know, figure in the, the cost of the interest. I don't think that we've 100% set the price of the lots either, so, you know, we might need to build in a little bit more, you know, in terms of, in order to cover, uh, the interest expense as well. So, but as far as, you know, borrowing rates, um, because it would be, um, you know, roads and utilities that are public use, it would be a tax-exempt borrowing. So you're looking at between 3% to 4% would be the interest rate on that.
Any other questions, Alder?
Lot of ifs and maybes and things like that that's going on here. This, when the developer sold this to the city, the only way the developer found that he could make any money on this project was by selling it to the city. Um, his bank wouldn't allow it to go through. He couldn't make money on it. So now the city all of a sudden is going to jump in, and the taxpayers with their open wallet are going to be paying the city these extra costs. And I'm not sure that that's really fair for our taxpayers, especially with everything that's gone on as far as reassessments, um, all the things as far as that have raised taxes and probably will at the end of this year when the budget is set and all of a sudden, the city is sitting in a position that they've got to raise the mill rate. Um, I really think that, uh, each council member should just consider this, and that's all that I really have to say on it.
That's a very valid point to Alder Person. The big difference is the city doesn't need to make a profit. We're not in it to make money. Um, so we have a bit of an advantage over a regular developer.
I just wish the city was in it to not lose money.
Right, and that is the goal, so. But all very valid points.
And just, you know, one thing that I think is kind of forgotten about in this conversation, when the city developed Whitetail, the city made a fair amount of money on that development, right? So we took those funds that was, that were made after all the infrastructure and the land costs were all covered, and we put them into what was known as today as the Housing Trust Fund. And that's managed through the city's redevelopment authority. The Housing Trust Fund, uh, invests money back into the core neighborhoods. Our Neighbor Helping Neighbor Grant, uh, which has been super successful over its almost seven or eight years of existence, is funded out of the Housing Trust Fund. Our Multi-Family Conversion Program Grant, uh, is funded out of that, another really good program as well, uh, and several others that I'm kind of blanking on being up here. But, so there is, there is benefit. Now, another thing is, and I understand that the municipality is not, in a typical sense, uh, used to playing developer. There are risks, whether or not you're a public or private developer in this case, right? You, just like Mr. Anderson, uh, couldn't make it work for himself financially. The city thought, well, if we up the density, the infrastructure stays relatively the same. Now that cost for the infrastructure or the, uh, land acquisition is spread out more. If you have fewer lots, that, uh, the concentration on, for each lot becomes higher. So I do think that that's something to think about. Another thing is, you know, the, the city is in this for the long haul, right? There are outside economic benefits for having more housing in your community. And remember, the city makes its return over property tax revenue in perpetuity, right? If we don't make the, the return upfront, that return comes over time as the property taxes out there increase as a result of development. So I understand that there's some hesitation from Alder Plissant, uh, because we're not a typical developer in this case, uh, but I think the city is in a much better position long-term if we were to do the development here.
Anything else, Alder Person?
It would be nice to see the return within my lifetime. Um, I think that the Whitetail subdivision, when that was done, it was paid for because of the long-term, it's timeframe it took to pay those lots, that that money then became available because it didn't have to pay anything off, and it could go into special funds, too. Um, some of this seems just to get lost in the numbers. And I'm done. I'm done talking.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Alder Morrow.
Comment. I mean, one of the problems that, um, I think that the city has is that there's nowhere to build a home. I mean, there's no place that you could buy a plot. I mean, that you could, I mean, there's only.
Let's not use plot.
Plot, okay. There's nowhere that you, you could buy a lot and that's already cleared and end up putting on a home. end up putting on a home. There's only, there was only Moses, there's only Eagle Summit and the Moses Creek area. And there was no other, there was no other place. I mean, for the, for housing stock, there is nowhere for folks to go unless they want to go to Grant. If they wanted, if they wanted municipal water and sewer, they'd have to go down to Plover for it. And so, as we saw with the last growth, that's where all the growth is. It's in Plover. Folks are moving down there. We don't have, we don't have the stock here. And the city, this is a long-term plan. And as Brian said, we, the city did make money on the Whitetail sub, the Whitetail subdivision. And with that excess money, that was put into other things to help our, to help the city as well. I mean, we are not looking at a quarter to make a profit. This is a long-term proposal for us. This is something that the city needs to, to, to help us improve and help us also grow, so that we can meet the needs of the folks who want to live here. And as Mary said, I mean, some people want zero lot lines. Some people want bigger lots. Some people want smaller lots. I mean, we have housing going up. We have the, we have all the apartments down the town for the infill. We have the convent area that's coming up. They're going to have townhomes there. We need to be able to compete with every, with everybody else. And if, and if we don't, we're going to continue to stagnate. And that is not something I want for our, for, for, for the city that I live in. I want, I want our city to be able to grow. And for, and for, for that, we need people to have options. Some people want to rehab a house, great. Some people want a bigger lot, fine. I mean, but we need options for everybody.
Thank you, Alder Person. Anyone else? Alder Person, Nibone?
That area with septic tanks, we created environmental hazard by the city developing that plot and running water and sewer. We're protecting our wellhead area. We're preventing a lot of pollution in the area. And there's an environmental cost that isn't going to have to be paid because we're not allowing that pollution to occur. So that's something that isn't really talked about. But there's a cost to that as well, to keep our water source clean, so.
I have one last comment, Mary. Something that Mary did bring up is that that's why we did buy it, is because he was going to put sewage, I mean, he was going to put tanks up there right next to one of our wellheads. And that is why the city bought it. It wasn't because it was failed. It was, it was because to help our city so that we can continue to have the clean water that we have. Because if, because his lots were going to be two acre lots, and they were, and they were going to have wells, and they were going to have sewage tanks, sewage tanks, sorry. They're going to have septic tanks there, which we're going to eventually leach in, leach into the wells that we have for our own city water. So that's why we ended up buying it. And we did pay a hefty price for it. And this is how we're trying to make our money back.
Any other Alder Persons who wish you to speak?
Sure.
Yes, go ahead.
I really appreciate all the conversation on this, because I went out there, looked at this place, and it really is a gem in our community. That, that water feature is something that I feel like as the city expands and grows over that way, something that's going to be very valuable. And protecting that water resource, as you've indicated, is something that I think has been lost in this conversation. Yeah, we, we have a housing crisis, and we do need to give more options to our people when they're looking for places to go. And we got to develop somewhere. Our, you know, we're tied to growth. We got, we got financial things to look forward to that are going to have to go, oh, yeah, we've been developing along the way. And so where are we going to do that? It's this thing that our directors have been having to balance, and it's a tough job. So thank you for all your work on this. When I've been going through it, I feel this thing, as, as much as it is already baked, in the sense that we're going out there, we're going to develop, I feel that we've kind of put the cart before the horse on some of this. And I would like to see us perhaps postpone it, like not approve it right now, have some more public input, get some more of what is desired out there back to us, and maybe we have a new plan, something a little more clear, something when we're looking at lots, because there's, like we were talking about, some speculation here on what it all looks like. And so maybe just, we don't need to decide on it right now. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Alder Christensen?
There was, Alder Lang, I'm not sure you were able to, to be part of the prior discussion at the Planning Commission. And there was a lot of, I think, public input and stuff provided. And I think staff is already starting to utilize some of that, and looking at some different aspects differently because of that public input. So this, this isn't, and that's part of the reason why things aren't written in stone right now, is because they are utilizing some of the, there was over a hundred people here for, there's a large number of people that came and spoke. And so I think staff's doing a really good job of utilizing that input and trying to come up with something that serves the needs of the, of the people, but also makes it so it's cost effective for the, for the city as well. So it's a tough balancing act, but I, I have confidence in them.
Thank you. Alder Plissance, again?
Yeah, I've got two quick comments. The problems with the water, if we hook this up, is still going to be there, because the Town Hall and the septic tanks and everything, which created this problem with the water, are still going to be influencing that area. Also, we have purchased in the last year two other subdivision areas that we're looking at. So there are other places that we could look at doing housing, where sewer and water are but right up to the edge of that.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, I want to remind you, we are not approving anything relating to the plat. This is a bid to run the utilities and infrastructure. Phase one is running it up to Gala. Once the plat is approved, the phase two covers the rest of it, which will be the road and utilities through there. Director Lemke, I see you standing there. Do you want to talk about anything on what a delay might affect, or anything along those lines, being in charge of all the water and sewer lines?
A delay in approving the project?
Right. As Alder Lang had suggested, yeah, let's, let's wait until the plat is approved.
Will it cost us more as this, if we delay it, like things go up in price? Like, how much more are we looking at, like if we delay it a month, two months?
You guys are really good at crystal ball questions today.
Well, I would say that the biggest risk is in having to re-advertise something. You don't want to do that. Your prices are going to go up. Getting early bids is one of our strategies to being in the ground affordably. You re-advertise something because of a window, and they're, they're going to be significantly more. The other fact is that, you know, you all recall the closed session meetings, the kind of strategy meetings about buying this, buying that, going there to develop this, to future develop that. If we're just talking about design of the lots themselves, it's irrelevant to the utilities right now. We are not going to move the road because of some minor changes in lots, because the change in density is not going to affect the road location in any significant way at all. We've looked at that very, very thoroughly, and I'm confident that if there's any change needed out there, it's going to be irrelevant, because the design of the lots will fit into the design of the blocks, if you will. Streets will stay the same place. So, you know, what I've seen is that there's been, oh, gosh, I don't even know how many of these meetings, following closed sessions meetings, getting us to this point. In addition to the fact that we've had our Town Hall meeting with the Town Hall already, to tell them we're going up Joe Street to develop the property to the north of them that the city owns, and incorporated all that comment, that was some time ago already. So if it's just about the design, there's no reason to worry, worry about that. The, the location of the utilities aren't going to change. What we might end up doing is putting in five more sets of laterals. That's very, very, very easy. Or five fewer, for that matter, you know?
Okay. The motion before you is to approve the bid in an amount not to exceed three billion, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents, subject to Plan Commission review. If you are in favor, you'll vote yes. If you are opposed, you'll vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
I think you said four billion.
Did I? Sorry.
Just want to correct that with million.
Let me give the number again, in an amount not to exceed three million, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents. It might be a little trivia thing going on. I'm a little fatigued. That is, that is the amount listed in the agenda. If you're in favor, vote yes. Oppose, no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Christensen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number sixteen is a resolution, the authorization to apply for Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources Urban Forestry Grant.
So moved.
Move approval.
By Shore.
I'll second.
Seconded by Fishler. Discussion.
Congratulations on your last.
Thank you.
Comments from the audience?
Christensen.
Thank you. Comments from the audience? Hearing and seeing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Christensen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Plissance?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Plissance?
Aye.
Nibone?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
And that is approved. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the main event.
Everybody left.
Before we get started, tomorrow at five o'clock in this very room is a reorganizational meeting for all existing and new Alder Persons. I would ask that we, we haven't done a group photo since COVID, and we're going to try and do one tomorrow. So if you can, dress appropriately, and get here fifteen, twenty minutes early, and we can try and get that photo done. But it takes a special kind of person to jump in and, and take a position like this. So I commend everyone for taking the initiative to do it. It's a thankless job. The pay is lousy. The hours are long. And no matter what you do, someone's going to give you a hard time about it, and say it was wrong, and that you don't know what you're doing. And maybe sometimes they're right. But generally speaking, everyone puts a lot of long hours in to try and make sure that they're doing the best for the people they represent, and the community as a whole. Tonight, we're going to take some time and allow Alder Persons to speak who did not seek reelection. They served plenty of time. That sounds like prison, doesn't it? In regards, it's kind of a ball and chain. But, you know, we, we've had some lively and healthy discussions, and I appreciate each and every one of you, regardless of what they may say on social media. The first one that I would like to recognize, the longest serving of our, can we call you a retiree yet? Getting out of the Alderman...
Soon to be former.
Gig, at, at least. So Alder Person Shore, would you please join me up here at the lectern?
He has a speech ready, so.
Everybody should.
Are you surprised?
This is where the party comments come in. So in recognition of your dedicated public service as an Alder Person, on the City of Stevens Point Common Council, the people of the City of Stevens Point extend their profound appreciation and sincere gratitude to you, David Shore, serving April of 2016 through April of 2024. Thank you, sir.
Sounds even longer when you say it.
The city clerk helped me with a problem with the traditional memento. My nameplate was actually stuck in the holder, right?
Oh, we can get it out.
Everybody, no, no, she took it very much. It really, it had, it's been an honor and a privilege representing the District...
Not yet, don't have to take it out yet.
The residents of District Two these last eight years. I'm incredibly grateful to the voters who gave me the opportunity to serve. And right off the bat, I want to say that second district residents will be in very capable hands with Alder-elect Jackie Guthrie. Job of an Alder Person, I think, is basically to make the best decisions you can for our community and its future. Most of the items you decide are uncontroversial. We've just dealt with some of them, all passing unanimously, because the city's excellent staff of professionals have teed them up for us. But some tough calls have to be made, and when they do, issues with valid arguments or public sentiment on both sides, democracy requires such decisions be made by officials who've been elected, by constituents, and are accountable to them. Some of those issues offer chances for compromise, but others just have to be hashed out. Once they're fully debated, we just let council members' votes fall where they may. Comes down to the pros and cons of the issue when persuading a majority of the council. In terms of some consensus building, we had a successful case in the ordinance on accessory dwelling and accessory commercial units. Some really good consensus. But, you know, a lot of the political hot button issues, controversies over the design of our, our streets are not suited to compromise, just inherently. We're either going to have a roundabout at Fourth Avenue, or we aren't. We're really, we are either going to have a, a road diet on Stanley Street, or we aren't. And the, the point about a majority of council members and your combined votes is key, is there's not much an individual Alder Person can do on your own. In the bigger picture, the council takes an overall approach. For years now, a solid majority has embraced the smart growth approach, that you bolster a community's property tax base and economic vitality through density. That just means having residences and businesses conveniently next to each other, especially downtown and along North Division, where I think we've had a lot of success. Another overall priority for this council has been a commitment to compensating city staff the best we can. It's very important. But keeping in mind that you have to build supportive colleagues over time, I really encourage you to try making changes on issues you're passionate about. What always fascinates me is all the types of policy steps or measures that you can pursue. They entail different processes. We've just been talking about process tonight, different political fault lines. The reason this fascinates me especially is, is my professional background. I don't know how many people are aware of it, but I've had a career spent working for nonprofits, whose mission is to make change or on, policy changes on issues. So I've spent my adult life coming up with things to ask decision makers to do, always trying to gauge what might be doable. So this chance to see life on, on the decision maker's side, again, with thanks to District Two voters, has truly been special. Just to go through a few examples of issues I've pursued in, in the past eight years, the new revised ordinance on home-based businesses took a full year, but again, some, you know, really good consensus building, rather, you know, rather than battling it out. In 2019, I continued the work of my Personnel Committee Chair predecessor, former Alder Person McCombe, worked with senior staff on adjusting our pay plan structure and raising the salaries on lower rungs of the ladder. On the issue of allowing overnight parking, it was, really was just waiting for sentiment to shift. I was the first to come out for this. Next was Alder Dalton. And after a few years, then a majority emerged. Sometimes it takes a long time without it being clear why. I've been a big supporter of the new pedestrian walkway that will connect North Division to Isidore Street. Actually, the tattoo on, on my right shin is a diagram of why you want your city blocks to not be too long. I can show people after. Anyway, we, we tore the, the old laundromat down a good two and a half years ago. So I hope, I hope that moves forward soon. And now a hot tip for you about something that's remarkably easy. I've said this every so often over the years, and that is tweaking parking rules for specific spots. Sometimes if you eliminate one or two parking lots, parking spaces, sorry, you can improve visibility at a corner and make things more safe. Something else we've been talking about tonight. And I've, I've had, over the years, I've had several good suggestions from constituents about that. My, my final couple of points, both coming under the heading, you never know. First, you never know who's out there appreciating what you're doing. I didn't expect that changing overnight parking would be one of the most popular issues that I pushed. Of course, I was happy to hear that from constituents in my last reelection campaign. Then there was the time I was up in, in Wausau at an event with Jeff Speck, who literally wrote the book on, about walkability. I think I gave my copy of the... staff on adjusting our pay plan structure and raising the salaries on lower rungs of the ladder. On the issue of allowing overnight parking, it was, it really was just waiting for sentiment to shift. I was the first to come out for this. Next was Alder Dalton. And after a few years, then a majority emerged. Sometimes it takes a long time without it being clear why. I've been a big supporter of the new pedestrian walkway that will connect North Division to Isidore Street. Actually, the tattoo on, on my right shin is a diagram of, of why you want your city blocks to not be too long. I can show people after. Anyway, we, we tore the, the old laundromat down a good two and a half years ago. So I hope, hope that moves forward soon. And now a hot tip for you about something that's remarkably easy. I've said this every so often over the years, and that is tweaking parking rules for specific spots. Sometimes if you eliminate one or two parking lots, parking spaces, sorry, you can improve visibility at a corner and make things more safe. Something else we've been talking about tonight. And I've had, over the years, I've had several good suggestions from constituents about that. My, my final couple of points, both coming under the heading, you never know. First, you never know who's out there appreciating what you're doing. I didn't expect that changing overnight parking would be one of the most popular issues that I pushed. Of course, I was happy to hear that from constituents in my last reelection campaign. Then there was the time I was up in, in Wausau at an event with Jeff Speck, who literally wrote the book on, about walkability. I think I gave my copy of the earlier edition to some new council member. After the event, I heard the Wausau city engineer say out of the blue that he wanted Wausau to have road diets just like Stanley Street in Stevens Point. Now, that engineer had no idea who I was or how hard I had worked on getting that to happen. Then there's another you never know, in a different sense. Because this is local, not national politics, we're really largely in the dark about public opinion. You can't really know what people in a community think unless you ask enough random residents to make a statistically representative sample, which is not really affordable or practical at this level. So if, now if I had a dollar for every time we council members have been slammed for not listening to the voices from the community, it would pay for a lot of lunches at Polito's. But look at this a bit closer, and it's clear, they aren't asking just to be listened to. They want the council to vote the way they want. And what critics often either discount or ignore is that there are others in the community who want the decision to come out the opposite way. So what's the answer? You know, when things get stirred up as much as they have? I'd love to see more agreeing to disagree. And not just everyone using our inside voices or avoiding name-calling, although that's nice. I mean acknowledging legit, good faith disagreement. It would help for everyone to look at disagreement as a matter of seeing the issue differently instead of saying people on the other side are radical or crazy. A basic rule of decorum calls for everybody at this podium to address our remarks to you and not to others at the meeting. In the same vein, the others in the room aren't supposed to applaud their team like in a sports event. And there's good reason for this. It's because the purpose of the discussion in this room is to help you reach your decisions on the issues, on the agenda items at hand. The decisions can be hard, the rhetoric can get heated, but speaking for myself, I know you'll make the best decisions you can for this community and its future.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Can't applaud.
No, she can.
Of course you can. I'm sorry. And next up, probably one of our most recent alderpersons, but very impactful nonetheless, always coming up with some good questions, a different perspective, and we appreciate that. Alder Person David Plissance, could you join me at the lectern?
I'm a true lame duck.
In recognition of your service as a dedicated public servant, as alderperson of the City of Stevens Point's Common Council, the people of the City of Stevens Point, do hereby extend their profound appreciation and sincere gratitude to David Plissance, serving November of 2022 through April of 2024. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Since I was only on for about a year and a half, I'll keep my speech to, it's probably being the shortest of everybody's here today. For the last six months, I've been wondering what I was going to say here tonight. I'm sure there's a few city staff people that are going to be happy to see me leave, but to be honest, you're not going to be half as happy as I am going to be in the morning, not having to deal with this anymore. The voters, they're the big thing as far as I'm concerned. They're the ones that put you into these seats. You're representing them. You all do seem to have a good job of listening to them and understanding them. And I hope even two new guys go about it the same way too, that are here. They're the ones that count. I heard a lot today earlier about the West River Drive situation. And I'm hoping that you people will be able to work on something that, it may be more than one thing that happens too. My thought is, and it can be kicked into the garbage can, but consider working with the Green Circle Trail Committee. There's a trail that's right at the end of bridge on Double H, and then it goes into the woods. And there's another spot where the trail is at, the railroad tracks on West River Drive. Consider something right in between there. I know that there's flood issues and stuff, but if you're on the Green Circle Trail on the north end, there's at least a half mile of boardwalk plank that you're putting your bicycle on the whole time. Something could be arranged for that. It would benefit the city. That, that road is probably the coolest road to drive on in town because of the fact that you go a distance right next to the Wisconsin River. There's no other spot in Stevens Point that you have river access like that. So something needs to be worked out for that neighborhood. There's a lot of people that I talked to about it on that side that don't feel that they get the fair shake in Stevens Point anyway. So work on that. Council members, I really, there's been times where, you know, we don't agree on things. But I'm going to leave here and look each one of you in the eye and say, I respect you. You have your opinions, and I respect that. They may not match mine, but that's life. I want to wish you all the best. And again, I want to thank the voters that got me in here. Thank you.
And last but not least, for this term, this one I probably owe the biggest apology to because, for whatever reason, the way my brain works, for nearly five years, I always have to consciously, consciously remember the name and look at the nameplate or whatever it is. So if you would oblige me one last time, Alder Keemer Fishler. Keely, could you join me at the lectern, please?
Oh, boy.
Keely, in recognition of your dedicated public service as an alderperson, on the City of Stevens Point's Common Council, the people of the City of Stevens Point, hereby extend their profound appreciation and sincere gratitude to you, Keely Fishler, serving from December 2019 to April 2024. Thank you very much.
First of all, I want to congratulate Dustin Bucy on his election win. I know that you're going to represent District 10 really well. Becoming an alder for the first time is a new and challenging experience. I commend your courage to become a public servant. It's not for the faint of heart. Courage is not the absence of fear. Courage is acting in spite of that fear. If any of the newer alders are feeling out of place, I want to assure you that you belong here. You have a seat at this table because you've earned it. When I interviewed with the council in 2019, I had done limited public speaking and was fearful of looking like I didn't know what I was doing. I may have put on a brave face, but I knew that I had a lot to learn. In every meeting and agenda packet, I've learned something new. Serving your districts and the city will force you to grow. You have taken the first step forward, doing something you've never done before. There are no directions or handbook that comes with your newly appointed positions. However, you will grow by leaps and bounds, and you may not recognize the stronger, more confident, and resilient leaders you will become. You are here to make difficult decisions for your districts and the city. You serve everyone first and yourself last. Leave your ego at the door and don't forget to be humble. Serving as alder for District 10 has not been easy and hasn't quite been the cakewalk. There are many people who have supported my decisions and many people who have disagreed with my decisions. For the many difficult choices I've had to make, I put in the hard work, asked important questions, weighed the pros and cons, and relied on my logic. I always did my very best to take all things into consideration. I want to thank city staff, the department heads, past alders, present alders, District 10 constituents, and the mayor. I've learned a lot from all of you and will take these lessons with me on my journey forward. I will never forget the two terms I served on common council, and I'm grateful and honored to have had the opportunity to serve District 10 and the City of Stevens Point. Thank you. And, oh, by the way, mayor, I kept my comments to under three minutes.
Again, thank you all very much. We wish you the best of luck. Tomorrow, we'll have a new council and a couple of new faces joining us. So we'll see you here at 5:00 PM tomorrow. With that, our agenda is exhausted, and we are adjourned.